All right, ready to go. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for December 13th, 2023. A little after six o'clock, we're here at City Council Chamber, State 45 High Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011. We have one public hearing this evening and involves amending zoning ordinances. Those rule call please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Mohler.
Present.
We have the quorum.
So I'm offering a prayer by myself, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if able. My God, thank you for the good the city team has accomplished in 2023. May this season be one of peace, family, friends, and good health. Pray for the safety of our first responders and healthcare personnel.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few special presentations. We're going to continue this swearing in ad of council member Fear until probably the first meeting in January.
Thank you.
Okay. The next special presentation is a Miami Conservancy District presentation by Mary Lynn Loder.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you very much, Daniel. Yes, my name is Mary Lynn Loder, the general manager of the Miami Conservancy District. It's nice to be back here in Hamilton. I was here a few months ago, I can't recall when that was, seems like just yesterday, but we've been busy doing a lot of work at the Conservancy District, and I'm here to provide you with an update that I am not overly excited about because this is really about the increased needs of the Conservancy District. And I'm excited about it because, you know, I feel very passionate that we do have a lot that we protect, not only here in Hamilton, but also up and down the river. But this is something that, you know, we all like to think that, you know, things get done by themselves or whatnot, but the fact is that infrastructure does take money and effort, and there is a process for us to go through, and we're at the beginning of that process as it relates to our readjustment. I do want to also share that we are excited, though, to kick off a beating in or a study in Hamilton later in the new year with the Army Corps of Engineers where we have secured a no-cost study to the city as well as a no-cost study to the Conservancy District where the Corps of Engineers is going to be coming in to help us identify what can we do to help reimagine the river in Hamilton as it relates to accessibility and still ensuring as much flood protection as we have right now. But the fact is that, you know, a lot of water comes down here in Hamilton from the entire watershed of the Great Miami River, and this study is going to help us try to figure out how can we maximize what Hamilton has as it relates to the river, but maybe we can start looking at what can be done from the concrete walls, the revetment, and the accessibility. So I'm not here to talk all about that, but I think it's really important that you know that we are working hard to try to figure out how can we help Hamilton envision this river city that it really wants to be, and there's no question about it that Hamilton is a thriving community along the Great Miami River and is really an example that many communities have. The Miami Conservancy District, though, we do protect about 47,000 properties up and down the river from flooding. In addition to that, those properties are wastewater treatment plants, water plants, roads and bridges, a lot of the infrastructure that Hamilton has. And I also want to just pause a little bit and look back at, you know, what did we, what caused MCD, the Miami Conservancy District, to be created? And it was about 110 years ago, the community here in Hamilton as well as communities upwards, you know, 100 miles away or 79 miles away up in Troy and Pickwa, we all experienced this devastating flood that resulted in over 350 people or more who perished in that, and many of them, I've seen as many as 200 were here in Hamilton. And so the illustration I have here are some of those historic photos from here in Hamilton, and as you can see on the map, you know, there are parts of Hamilton that were under four or eight feet of water, in some cases 15 or 18 feet of water where Spooky Nook is today, and those are some of the most, you know, most exciting areas of Hamilton that are seeing regrowth and redevelopment and stuff. And what the Conservancy District does is help to protect that and ensure that doesn't happen again. There's about $700 million worth of property value that's protected in Hamilton from the Conservancy District. And I also, I think it's important to remember, too, that the flood that happened in 1913 was an incredibly large one. It was one that we have not seen since then, and it has even been characterized, you know, we talk often, you know, when we're talking about flood plains and whatnot, about 100-year storm, sometimes a 500-year storm. I used to work for the Metropolitan Sewer District in Cincinnati, and there was one storm that Hamilton County had. It was in August of 2016, and I'm sure that Butler County and Hamilton experienced that as well. And that one storm, because of the lack of infrastructure that Hamilton County and Cincinnati does not have, but Hamilton does through the Conservancy District, that one storm cost Cincinnati and the Metropolitan Sewer District $20 million worth of damages. And that is something that because of the Conservancy District, Hamilton and the communities up and down the river have their protections that is really unparalleled. It's kind of equivalent to, the engineers tell me it could be anywhere from a 3,000 to a 5,000-year storm of protection that we have through not only the channel system here in Hamilton, but through the upstream dams that are in need of repair or rehab. That storm that we had in 1913 conveyed 352, and does this pointer work? Yeah, okay. 300, maybe it does it on the screen. Okay, that 352,000 cubic feet per second of water was coming down the river in Hamilton, and of course spread, in some cases, all the way over to Route 4. And again, the illustration that I showed earlier, some areas had, you know, eight feet of water, 10 feet of water, 12 feet of water, and we haven't seen that since then. In 1959 was the closest storm since then, and again, the channel wasn't fully filled up. The system that we have is very good, but it's old and it's in need of some repair, and that's what this readjustment is that I'm going to be sharing some information with you about. And I think it's also important to recognize that the system was designed as a system, a watershed integrated solution of upstream dams of the channel, of the levees, and all the communities all throughout the Miami Conservancy District that are protected. All of this system works together as one. And I think it's also important to look back at some significant failures just of dams and levees in other parts of the country. In 2020, there was a massive failure of a dam in Michigan that it was identified as a preventable, a preventable event. That event alone cost that owner of the dam $120 million worth of court orders that they had to pay the people who were damaged by that. There's also the Orville Dam failure in California that 190,000 people had to be evacuated. These are preventable things. At the Conservancy District, we've been doing studies over the last several years, and we're identifying issues that we need to resolve. We don't have all the funding to be able to do those, that work that we need to do, but we don't want this to happen in our communities. And that's, again, part of what this is about. So out of the 1913 flood, the Miami Conservancy District was created to be able to ensure never again, you know, the promises were made in the attic of, you know, the folks who were on their rooftops. And because of the foresight of those who came before us over 100 years ago, created the Conservancy District and the 55 miles of levees, all the dams, and from that, because of that, we now have what we call our Riverway, the opportunity for communities to grow and prosper around the fact that we don't have to worry about flooding from the river in our communities. There was a study done, collected from FEMA data that identified the Dayton region and the communities along the Great Miami River are those communities that are at, they're among the top 10 safest or protected areas of the country from natural disaster, and I contend that that's because of the Miami Conservancy District. So I think it's really important to remember that and understand how our system works. And so this is just an illustration of our system of five dry dams, 55 miles of levees and floodwalls, we got floodgates, 1,100 acres of floodplain, and then we also control about 35,000 acres of land upstream of those dams that we control the rights on development in those properties. And so also in the official plan of the Miami Conservancy District, it says that the storm that we would experience, if we had experienced again of 1913, would half of that volume would be conveyed through the channel, the other half would be stored in those basins. And so we regulate land use up there. We do not allow development of homes and whatnot in about 35,000 acres of land, and that's because we're controlling 75% of the drainage of this watershed that comes down into Hamilton. We're protecting the communities upstream of Hamilton as well as downstream, too. And this is an illustration of where we have those rights of those 35,000 acres of land. I want to talk a little bit, just also, one thing that we look at is we have different models of, you know, if we were to have a dam failure. We currently have five large dams up in Montgomery County and Lockington County. Englewood Dam is one of our longest dams, and if it were, if we were to have the big storm again, and again, we had it 110 years ago, and if it were to happen again, and if the Englewood Dam were to fail, this is an illustration of what would be underwater in Hamilton. The purple is between eight and the light purple is between eight and 20 feet of water. And this is again, if our Englewood Dam is filled and it breaks. It's an earthen dam, it does have concrete walls, but it allows a regular flow of water to come through it. And this is, again, something that we work very hard to make sure this doesn't happen, but we need to take care of the problems that we have in that system. Now, this is an illustration, if we had a 100-year storm and Englewood were to fail, Hamilton would have a lot of water in the channel, but because the system that we have is overbuilt with a higher amount of capacity than is needed from the 1913 flood, that water would stay in the channel of the levees of the Great Miami River. So, and again, that's because we have a system that is very well-designed and able to hold that water. However, it requires reinvestment and repair. Here's an illustration of our Germantown Dam where we had our March 2023 storm just earlier this year. We had some high-water events, and as you can kind of see here, the wall of the upstream wall of Germantown is starting to crumble, and it's falling into the river. It's not going to get better on its own. These are the kinds of things that we have to invest in, and we don't have the money to do this. We are currently seeking state capital funds to make these kinds of repairs. We did get a grant from FEMA to do the designs of Germantown, Englewood, and Taylorsville to be able to design these upstream wall repairs. It would cost about $13 million to do it. We would have to, you know, get, again, the state representatives to agree that this is a priority. We believe it's a priority. We've been talking with some different state reps, and we think we have a good success to be able to get this, but we're going to need the support from our communities to be able to help us generate the local match that we would have to put forward. Right now, our budgets are very tight to be able to provide that kind of additional investment, but it's something that's needed, and it's something that we are looking for ways to try to not just spend local dollars, but how can we maximize either federal or state dollars to make some of the improvements that we need to make. These are just pictures of inside the levee or along the levee or through the levee. We have pipes that go through the levee, they're called penetrations or encroachments, and as you can see, some of these pipes are cracked and broken, and those are risks of levees, and levees fail and levees breach, and that happens, and that has happened, in other places of the country. We haven't had that. We have, you know, a really good reactive staff that are, you know, trying to prevent things from happening, but we're very lean. We have about 47 people that work on the flood protection system, actually, as well as the recreation system and our aquifer protection. So we're stretched quite thin. This map here is a map of Hamilton that shows all of the different floodgates that are located on the, in the levees as well as just storm sewer pipes that go through the levees. Not all of them are in bad shape, but some of them are clay, some have been there long enough, they've, we have done inspections, we do annual inspections of these, but we, again, don't have all the resources that we need to do to do the lining. Last year, I think we did partner with Hamilton to do some lining, and that was extremely helpful for us. Here's just a picture, again, of a levee breach in California earlier this year where a levee failed, and then this other illustration is a map of if any of the levees failed up in Dayton, like where those areas would be impacted and whatnot. So these are issues that we are currently facing because primarily our maintenance assessments that we have to address the system have been flat since 2012 to 2022. We were generating about $4.5 million worth of assessments, that's from individual properties that benefit as well as units of government that benefit from the flood protection system. So we've had flat revenues. In 2023, the Conservancy Court authorized an increase of about $1.6 million, so that helped us try to identify some additional needs essentially because there's been some deferrals of identifying what really needs to get done. That additional money helped us start to identify what are the highest priorities for us to address right now. It also helped us address some requirements from FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency requires us to do an accreditation of all of our levees. We completed that for Butler County and Hamilton in 2012 and through 2016, but we have more to do up in Montgomery County, which we are estimating that's essentially about $500,000 extra that we started doing this past year, and then next year, and the two years after that, too, will have to do. We've been also, you can, and these are, this is just our actual and projected revenues and expenditures, and you can see that, you know, again, we've been flat for some time. We had a fire of one of our garages, our primary garage in Dayton, we got insurance money to take care of that, and again, we had to do this Lockington Dam wall repair this past year where we are now getting reimbursed from a low-interest loan from OWDA, but that's where that spike is in our expenses from this year. We've got, we've gotten some Economic Development Agency grants to widen some levees, and those are also cash outlays, though, that we have to have to put some money into for the matches for those. But this is not a sustainable way for us to be working, and so we have, we have our maintenance revenue is based on assessments. Those are assessments from individual properties that benefit from the flood protection system as well as local governments. It was planned in 2020 that we would have gotten a readjustment of our benefits because right now the revenue we're collecting is based on 2012 property values. And in 20, and that has been the case since 2012. The Ohio Revised Code only allows us to do a readjustment of our benefits no more frequently than every six years. And so while the court authorized us to do it in 2020, there was an appeal of the Butler County property value at the state level, and so we were not able to proceed. As a result of that, we've had to dip into our cash reserves in order to be able to do the necessary maintenance on the system. That has resulted in a situation where we are facing a deficit right now, and it's really important that we get going on this readjustment and be able to proceed with the increased, increase of the property values. The whole point of this readjustment is to ensure that the properties that are protected are paying their fair share. We pay, there's about $10 billion worth of property that's protected from the Conservancy District, and prevention is much cheaper than reaction for those properties as well. So just real quickly, in terms of how we're funded, again, the Conservancy Court determines when we could do the readjustment. That has been authorized us to do that, and now that the property value appeal is resolved, that was resolved in September, we're proceeding through that process. And again, these are some of the buildings and illustrations of buildings that were not here 2012, and they're not currently paying for flood protection. And so that's the whole point of doing this readjustment, is to ensure that it's fair and equitable, and those that are benefiting from flood protection are paying into the system. The process for us to do this is, again, to, we will be working with, going to our Board of Appraisers in February with a certified appraisal record of the benefits and the assessments, and we've been working to crunch those numbers with preliminary property values. So that's what I want to kind of share with you today in terms of what that is looking like specifically for Hamilton and other examples as well. So this is an example, I'm going to just walk through three different examples of impact. This is for a property that's worth, that the property value is $100,000, and so we have different flood factors. That's how we figure, that's how our system is set up to be able to sort of, for properties that are protected by a levee, they have a higher protection than those that are just protected by a dam. So here in Hamilton, we have five, about five and a half miles worth of levee. Those properties that are on the other side of those levees are fully protected by those levees, and as a result, they pay a higher flood factor because we have more assets that are protecting them. And so let's take an example of a property that flooded with 10 feet of water, that is protected with 10 feet of protection from our levees. That property is currently, if it's $100,000 worth of value, is looking at with our updated readjustment to have an increase of about $62 per year for a maintenance assessment. Now, that's, again, a property that flooded like at least 10 feet of water in the 1913 flood, and the reason we keep on going back to 1913 because that's the design storm. Our infrastructure was designed and constructed to be able to ensure that that 10 feet of water does not flood that property again. Another example is if there was only a half a foot of water on that property, then the assessment right now, based on the preliminary projections, is it would be an additional $12 per year. If I said month earlier, it's per year. And again, this is the area of protection within Hamilton that is protected. The dams, those are areas that are protected by, that are illustrated here in blue. So we don't have levees in those areas, and so as a result, they're just considered partially protected, so they don't pay as much for protection because they're not getting as much for protection. So a property that's $100,000 property currently pays probably about $29 and is looking at an increase of about $7 per year. Just to break this down a little bit further, this, in terms of where those properties are by county, Hamilton County only is protecting, only about 3% of the properties that we protect are in Hamilton County. In Butler County, about 35% of the properties that we protect are in Butler County. Montgomery County, 45. This pie chart here is showing essentially 88% of the individual parcels that we protect are paying, in the projected updated seven readjustment of our benefits, are paying less than $250 a year for flood protection. Unit benefits, unit benefits are something that are public corporation unit assessments. These are payments that the cities and the counties that are protected are paying for the ability to ensure that their streets and roads and bridges are not going to be flooded or washed away like they were in 1913. It also allows for equality of life and flood protection and for further economic development. If you didn't have flood protection, you wouldn't have the ability to be able to prosper as we have been up and down the river. So local governments do not pay for the individual parcels that they own, rather, it's a factor of all of the properties that are protected. And again, another benefit is, you know, emergency services are not restricted from floodwaters coming from the river, like that whole system is working to help protect the roads and bridges and whatnot. So the municipal benefits that units pay, the local governments pay for villages and cities, it's 40% of the sum of the individual properties within a jurisdiction. And this is established in the Board of Appraisers that has been part of the Miami Conservancy District, that is part of state law, that we have to have a Board of Appraisers determine how benefits are calculated and methodology is allocated. So what I want to share with you is what the updated numbers are preliminary, they're not final yet, we're still working through those, but for Hamilton, the total number of, the total of the benefited individual properties in Hamilton in our six readjustments, so this was back in 2012. back in 2012, it was determined that $23.4 million worth of benefited individual properties existed within the flood protection system. That update now, based on the preliminary 2023 county property values, is $41 million worth of benefited properties, benefits. So that's 35% of the property value times the flood factor. So depending on the depth, depending on how tall the building is, there's different factors for determining the flood benefits. By then taking that 40%, previously in the sixth readjustment in 2012, that number was 9.37 million. Today, in the preliminary numbers, about $16.4 million is Hamilton's total benefits on property value and the flood factors. Overall, right now, based on the 2012 numbers that were authorized by the Conservancy Court, Hamilton is contributing about $205,000 for flood protection. Updated property values and updated benefits to those properties based on property value and the flood factors is projecting Hamilton's unit assessment to go up to about $457,000 a year. Those are anticipated for collection in 2025. The next step on this is that there will be public notices in February, but I'm trying to get with communities right now to just share what those, these preliminary numbers are so that you're not blindsided by it and you know what it is. In addition to our maintenance needs, though, as I mentioned, we have other capital needs as well that we don't have funding for. Our capital assessment expired in 2022, and so right now we have no sustainable fund. We're looking for grants. We're looking for ways to get this done, but long term, we do need a capital fund in addition to the maintenance to take care of the system. So that's what I have. I know that's a whole lot, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. That's, that's a lot to digest. Question, there's a maintenance assessment, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, when, is that, is the, is the readjustment of appraisal of benefits part of that maintenance assessment? Are those two different buckets?
The, the maintenance assessment is based on the readjustment of benefits.
Okay, so that is some kind of a methodology that results in the maintenance assessment?
Correct.
Okay. There were some incredible increases coming up, correct?
That's correct.
I mean, if somebody goes from a small amount or zero up to what I've heard quarter of a million dollars per year?
How much? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
From close to zero or a minimal amount up to like quarter of a million dollars, is that per year?
Well, it, it all is based on what is the value, what is the value of the property, and then how is, how is, what is the protection? So there could, could have been a property that is located near the river where flood, flood levels were, say, you know, 15 feet. And, and, and based on the system that we have, that property is protected. But if that property is vacant and has, you know, has not been increased in value in any way, it could still be paying a very little amount. So it's, it's really, property value is a big part of how that is determined.
And I know we've been partners in the past, and I've been inside your building, and there's a plaque there dedicated to the citizens of Hamilton, Ohio, for what they did to help become one of the most incredible groups, organizations, and I think it was all private funding. But be that as it may, so we're paying for the value of the protection as part of the methodology, I guess.
The, the benefits are monetized, okay, to determine what is the, the value of that benefit, and then that benefit then is, there's a calculation done really to back out of, to, to get the maintenance dollars needed to be able to take care of the system. So property value is a big part of how our, our, our maintenance revenue is collected, and it's based on what is the value of that, that building or that land, and how much is it protected by Miami Conservancy District infrastructure. And then that is used in a calculation of a rate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Has that valuation always been in place, or is this a new formula that you've come up with now?
This is the same formula that, that was used in the six three adjustment and prior adjustments as well. So the, the methodology is not changing. Primary thing that's, that's changing is the property value.
Is it because it has not been gradually come up in increments that you're just doing it and one fell swoop and now hitting everybody with it?
So the way that the, the, the calculation is done is to try to do it with the intention that the rate doesn't have to go up for at least an eight-year period. So it's set so that, we, we set it so that revenues are, are coming in and we are putting extra money in reserve so that in years seven, eight, or six, seven, and eight, we're then using those reserves to, to kind of take care of the expenses. Like at the end of a readjustment, right now, we are three years overdue for a readjustment. So typically, we would have done this readjustment in 2020, but because of the Butler County appeal, we had to hold off. If we would have done it in 2020, we would have been generating more revenue now, so we wouldn't be dipping into cash reserves. But it's, it's set up so that we are, we are collecting more than we need in the first few years so that in the last few years, we are then spending that down. Because state law does not allow us to do a readjustment any more frequently than every six years. And if we were to do it more frequently, then that could also result in more people asking questions about why is it changing when the only thing that's changing is, is our rate and their property value isn't changing? So this allows municipalities to kind of plan better for the next at least eight years when we're not going to, or our intention is to not increase the rate.
And who sets that rate?
The rate is set by the Conservancy Court. There's a judge from every county of the Conservancy District that, that has to approve the rate. It's first recommended by the Board of Directors of the Miami Conservancy District. There's three Board of Directors.
And selfishly, I just care about what's going on in Hamilton. So how can we be sure that we're going to get our slice of what we're paying? Because it seems like a lot of times we have been neglected while everything up north towards Dayton has been improved. So how do we make sure that we have a voice in what's going to happen in Hamilton?
Well, you're, one of our board members is from Hamilton. Mark Rentschler is on the, the Board of Directors, and I've been working closely with Mark as well as the city of Hamilton to try to, again, get that study from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers so that we can start to work on kind of the reimagining of the river. The fact is that, you know, one of the first conversations I had with Joshua Smith was about, you know, how his perception, and I don't disagree with him, that the Miami, Great Miami River is, is, you know, kind of looks like a glorified storm sewer ditch. And I mean, honestly, I got to tell you, that was somewhat music to my ears because I believe true, I, I completely, wholeheartedly believe that we can make the river a little bit more inviting and intriguing and safe, not to, you know, to, to make, to do away with flood protection. In some areas, we need to have channelized rivers, and we'll have to have still some hardened areas of the, the riverbank, and it's going to cost a lot of money. But again, this, this effort could help to identify some opportunities with, there's something called the Water Resources Development Act, and Congress renews this every year. And I believe in talking with the Army Corps of Engineers, they've indicated that they believe that the Miami Conservancy District should be able to get some special authorization through the Water Resources Development Act, WERA, because, as you said, Mayor, this system was developed primarily by local and private money. There was very little federal or state money that was put into the Miami Conservancy District for the construction of it. When, after, you know, four months after the 1913 event, four months after that event, 110 years ago, $2 million was raised locally, and that's not in today's dollars, that's back then. $2 million was raised because of the local ambition of we're going to solve this ourselves. But today, with the cost of everything, the Corps of Engineers recognizes in talking with them, and this is what we would need to work on to try to get into the Water Resources Development Act, that the Miami Conservancy District and the communities up and down it should get special authorization and get special funding because the federal government never put any money into this system.
Let's just say that we may not get federal funding. If I owned a parcel that gets yearly assessments, I wanted to file exceptions according to Ohio law, they file that, is it with the Conservancy Court? Is that where it gets filed?
That's correct, yes. The Conservancy Court in, after we certify the record in late February, it's going to be a public notice, and I can make sure that you're aware of that. There will be a magistrate appointed by the Conservancy Court so that people can submit exceptions as to, you know, and, and that would be heard by a magistrate as to whether that is something they would accept or not.
And that window is a 30-day window after it's published?
That's.
How is it published?
It would be published in all of the local papers. I can make sure that City Council is aware so that you could put, you know, special notifications out for you if you'd like, but typically it's been the, the local papers and on our website.
Okay, I mean, not many, I mean.
I know.
I mean, I still, it's going to be some folks who are going to fall through the cracks.
It will.
And whether it's a small business.
Yeah.
Or whether it's, some businesses are going to get really a big change in their yearly assessment. 30 days is, first of all, not a very long period of time. Is that probably by Revised Code, 30 days?
Yes.
Okay.
We will also be sending out notices to all property owners and letting them know a website that we'll have so that they can put their parcel ID or name or address in so they can see what the estimated increase is going to be, increase or decrease. There's actually some that do decrease because, again, changes have happened in, in the land condition or building.
Mr. Mayor. Mary Lynn, thanks for so much for your, your very, very in-depth presentation. A few things just strike me, and, and again, the rates are extraordinary, as, as we've discussed. How far upriver is Anquodam when you talked about if there were to be a catastrophic failure? How far up is that from Hamilton?
Yeah, it's, I don't know.
Roughhouse.
Yeah, rough, it's, it's going to be northern Montgomery County, so it's on the border. The, the dam itself is in Montgomery County, and then the basin upstream is in Miami County.
Understood, very large, if you will, lake that's created. I understand.
And it would take, what you probably couldn't see up there, too, is that the time, if there were to be a failure, it would take about 13 or 14 hours for that water to get down here.
Okay. We discussed who created the assessment. Thank you for sharing. And again, if it were incremental, and if we were having this conversation six years ago and people were aware of it, how many properties are in the Hamilton floodplain that would be affected and that are paying into the rates right now? Roughly, how many properties?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Okay, that would be important to know if they're, and I'm using silly numbers, but if there were 1,000, 500, or 1,500, but somewhere that people would say, oh my gosh. And people know that, again, the rates of what you shared with us tonight are going to go up extraordinarily. It's not a $3 lift that people would be able to say. I understand that. If in your mind, because of the way this is going to, to be created in a 30-day period, when would the repairs, when would we start to see activity in the river levies? You mentioned five and a half miles of levies. If you take the northernmost piece of property at the edge of Hamilton in the southernmost, do you have any idea how many river miles that is roughly?
I, I don't. In, in Hamilton?
Uh huh.
No, I, I know that we have five and a half miles of, of levies, but I'm sure about.
And I wrote that down, but importantly, so we know where those affected properties, whether it is a residence or whether it is a business, and, and then some of those businesses that are faced, and you had the screen up there that, that showed some of the businesses along the entire river corridor, whether they're in Dayton or Hamilton or further downriver.
Right.
And what those effects would be. So again, that information, as you can get back to Council, I'm sure we would appreciate it. You mentioned floodgates that are in the levies.
Yes.
Are there floodgates in our levies here in Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay. Are those, are those gates removed so, so creeks and, and I'll call it surface water can flow, and then they're put back in place?
Yeah, they're, they're manual gates, so when the river gets to a certain elevation, we, we actually monitor that very carefully, and we have a caretaker that's located right down here in Hamilton. So when the river elevation approaches different levels, then we're closing certain gates.
Interesting, because of, many of us have lived here for a number of years or else all of our lives, and may not have known that, that those gates go into place when the river is at high level, especially in the spring and, and heavy rains, and like you said, things that we know are coming from upriver to be able to put in place to protect the levy system and, and the properties around it. I think we're all very, very keenly interested. I've had business leaders call me because those properties are large in place to understand what you're presenting with us tonight. So thank you for sharing, and we're not shooting the messenger, but you happen to be the messenger.
I know, yeah, I, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm Mr. Ryan. Mary Lynn, thanks for coming down again. Haven't seen you in a couple months, so I hope all's well. Appreciate the detailed information tonight. I, too, have some, some serious concerns about what bills are getting ready to be delivered, specifically to some of our, our folks that are located on the river that we have worked so hard to get developed in, in Hamilton. What potentially could happen down the road, the ramifications? I can see developers saying, I don't want to come here anymore. We got to pay fees like this, I'm going to go somewhere else. I hope that there's a communication method started with MCD for folks that you know are going to be opening up here along our riverbank and saying, hey, guys, thanks for coming to Hamilton, we're here to work with you. By the way, we do this assessment every six years. Right now, this is how much you could, you know, potentially be owing. Some of these folks may not even know what they're getting into in this town, and that is a very dangerous precedent to set here. We cannot go backwards in Hamilton. You know, stuff like this is what caused people to leave Hamilton and leave Ohio. We got to be business friendly here because if we aren't, they are leaving the state, and we are going to be suffering against. With, with that being said, it's reassuring to hear that you guys are getting grants. And in fact, I, I read the newspaper this morning, you were quoted, that Governor Dewine gave out, what is it, 47 million to the H2 Ohio program? God, I hope MCD is getting something of that to where we can use that 47 to reduce these fees, reduce the burden to, to the businesses that we have literally begged to come into Hamilton. So I, I really hope the group understands that times are really tough right now, and believe me, I understand safety. That's the whole point of this, safety and security for all of the city, for all of our residents, for all of our businesses. But damn, to put this on the back of some of our folks that we have literally busted our ass to get in this town is just going to be really, really devastating. And times are tough. Times are tough for a lot of folks. Times are really hard for our business folks, and they are assuming a lot of risk, and I really don't know how much more some of these guys can take before they just break. So I, I really hope we can get some stuff worked out, can clean the communication a little bit, work on the assessments, and take advantage of, of every state and federal dollar we can get. I'm willing to help you do that, and to get some money down here to offset some of the pain. But at the end of the day, I, I'm really, really troubled by what's going to be coming down in '24.
Can we, can you contact like the top 20 folks, parcel owners, who are going to be affected by this readjustment? The top 20 who are paying, then maybe the top 20 which had the highest percentage increase? You could do that in addition to all the other manners of publication, social media, mail, newspaper, Chamber of Commerce.
Yep.
I mean, for something like this, even if it overlaps multiple times, I don't think you can put this out too much. If it goes out too.
If it goes out too little, that's going to be a sad situation. We've always partnered well. But I was reading here in some of your handouts, readjustment updates, the flood protection benefits based on updated property values, and you know the property value situation that we're going through in Butler County, in Hamilton. Ensuring assessments are fair and equitable. If the court does its job, the court will be fair and equitable, your Conservancy Court. But we got to get the word out there, and yes, money does have to be spent to maintain. There's no doubt about it. No doubt about it. I'm sure that cost has gone up, but this is an expense that a lot of folks weren't expecting. That has caused some shock to the financial system. So, we got to get the word out there, how to have another look at it. I hope there's some subjectivity to these dollar figures that makes sense to somebody who's put a lot of money into a project, so.
So, these rates are set in stone?
No, not yet. No. The rates that we are doing these preliminary estimates on, we are still trying to see and make sure that it's based on what we really need in eight years so that we don't have to increase it again. So, over the next two months, we're continuing to refine, so they're, but I'm sharing them in, with the anticipation that, you know, we're not going to be, they're not going to be higher than the 2.78. I think we've identified some opportunities to make some reductions.
It's based on what you need, there's no consideration to the hardship that it might be to some of these businesses? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a recourse for these businesses that, is it hardship for?
It would be the exception process for them to file an exception with the magistrate and go through that process, and that would be for the Conservancy Court to hear.
Yeah, we need to get this word out a lot. I mean, if it means that we need to get letters written or whatever, we need to make people very aware of it so that you hear what we think down here of what's going on.
Yep.
So, Mr.-
Please, go ahead.
Mary Lynn, so why isn't the budget for the Conservancy based on your needs rather than on the property values? Because that seems like that would be hard to figure. So, we have potential developments on the river that may or may not happen. If everything stops right now, there's no more development on the riverway, which I believe this would kind of hamper future development, what does that do to your budget?
So, the rate is based on what our needs are. That's, so if, it's based on our needs as well as the work that we have to do. So, it is based on the revenue that we need to be able to ensure that we can do the work that we need to do over the next eight years, and then it's back calculated based on who's benefiting from this system that we're maintaining. And so, that's where the property value comes in with how much they're protected from the infrastructure that we have.
And how much they're protected is based on the value of?
And how, and how deep the flooding was in 1913 for that design storm.
Oh, okay.
So, not, you know, your neighbor, you might pay something different than your neighbor because you sit a little bit higher on the hill, your neighbor's lower, the floodwater would have been deeper there. And so, the infrastructure that we have is still providing the same level of protection in terms of you're dry, but we have to have more infrastructure to keep you dry, being lower, than that property that's higher.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, it's a very unique way to do it. It is the way that it's always been done with the Conservancy District, and from a property-by-property perspective, it's a very fair and equitable way to do it as opposed to everybody's going to pay the same thing.
Yeah.
It's astounding to me because, so you, not you, but Miami Conservancy determines what is best for us. We have no say-so in what we want done, right? You tell us what you're going to do.
Not necessarily. I mean, I think that we have base level of maintenance that we need to do, and that's what the maintenance assessment is for, is to be able to ensure that, you know, we're meeting standards of flood, flood specifications, flood standards. We're maintaining the infrastructure as it needs to be maintained for flooding at a base level. When we're talking about things like the revetments or flood walls, you know, I think that's where we do have, I believe that we do have the opportunity to have conversations with communities a little bit more of what do you want to do. For example, up in Pickwa, they're just wrapping up a levee that was, right along the river, there was Lock Nine Park. It was a historic Miami Erie Canal lock, and, but then there was a big levee right sort of alongside it. They, they wanted to move that levee back, they wanted to create a park there, and honestly, I think probably Markham Park is like an example of what they wanted because now they did do just that. They moved the levee back. We wound up contributing a little bit to that, too. They led that project, and we helped them make that flood protection system work better with their park. Similar, I think we probably had some conversations with the city, city driving those things. I'd like to have us look at, what are some ways, as before we have to make improvements to our system of the old concrete or the dams or, you know, levees, what is it the community wants to have as part of this? Let's not just put the same concrete there that we had before, but is there a different way to imagine that?
So, will you, will you and your committee come here and have public meetings to meet with us in Hamilton and our residents and let us truly be an active part of what's going on?
Yes, I've been working with some, some different entities within Hamilton to kind of talk about, you know, what, what the plan is, you know, share with them, you know, the readjustment, the fact that we do want to bring in the Corps of Engineers. There is some opportunities for us to do things differently and get that kind of feedback from, from different leaders all throughout Hamilton. Happy to come here to City Council and provide updates.
Will you have a town hall here in this room within that 30-day timeframe?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, I think it's, we have been partners on so many good projects. Our river development over the last 12 years, a little more than that, is tremendous. So, but flexibility is important, and flexibility will lead to success. Let's see if we can have a meeting here, not on the 29th day, but maybe on the 9th day of that 30-day period.
Okay.
And thank you for educating us, but there is a shock going through our, our system right now.
Yeah.
It's financial shock. So, but yeah, if you look at your schedule-
Absolutely.
And that way, people can maybe even file their exceptions here in this room.
Daniel, if you don't mind, in the center and getting something set up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
If you're good with that, I think that's, that'll be helpful for all of us.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, we historically haven't talked a lot about it after the assessment, and then it's like, okay, it's done, right? But it's, we have to keep talking about, about what it is that we do, how we were able to do what we do is, is through the partnerships that we have with all the communities and those that are protected. And also, I, you know, you mentioned about the chamber. A few months ago, at least maybe two months ago, I facilitated a, the Ohio Chamber had a session on, on the riverway, on our great Miami Riverway, and we had Crawford Hoynes as well as the folks from, who are redeveloping the Dayton Power and Light facility up in Miami's Berg, and, and they really emphasized, too, that, you know, we're not like your typical flood protection district. We want to see more economic development around our riverway because that's how we actually are able to get our work done, but it's got to be a good partnership. And they, those folks talk highly of the fact that we have this amazing system, and if it wasn't for flood protection, then we wouldn't have what we have throughout the entire region. And I know that we have a lot of work to do yet, but I think that in working together, I think we can educate people more about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Richard, you doing the London Road? Who's doing the London Road?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. If you recall, we were, Scott Hoover gave a presentation in November about the proposed temporary solution to our crash problem we're having at the intersection of South Washington and New London Road and Elmwood. We're going to move forward with the temporary solution of making it a right turn only off of South Washington and off of Elmwood. We're proposing to, well, we are going to make this change beginning January 2nd. We have a conflict at the intersection of West Fairway Drive and New London. We're going to be closing part of that road between Christmas and New Year's to do some work at that intersection. We will maintain two-way traffic at that location, but we didn't want to implement this change as well as have that other lane restriction at the same time, so we're going to wait till after the first year. We're going to be, I didn't bring the right paper. We're going to be installing signage ahead of time, message boards alerting motorists of this change two weeks prior to the event. We're also going to be putting road signs up along both South Washington and Elmwood to make sure the motorists are notified as well. We're going to be working with the Department of Neighborhoods, making sure that they get the word out to all those that are part of the neighborhood and will be affected by this. We will be issuing social media releases. We'll be issuing our normal news release as well, notifying motorists. We'll also be working to notify folks of alternative routes that they can use, specifically using Millville to Ross Avenue to B Street to Columbia Bridge. We believe that's the primary route that people use by going down South Washington, so we're going to be alerting folks of that as well. So, we're doing as best we can and making sure everyone is notified of the changes upcoming, and then also give them alternative routes. Do you have any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ryan. Rich, when you mentioned memos going out to the residents that use the thoroughfares, both, both Washington and Elmwood, are those letters going to go out soon? We're two weeks out. So, is the engineering department going to send those letters out quick?
Well, we're not sending the letters out. We're going through the social media and going through the Department of Neighborhoods, but yes.
Okay. Is our-
We've already, we've already notified some of them already. We've notified both Baden High School as well as Hamilton School System about this change, so they can start planning how they might have to, especially Hamilton, might have to route some of their buses differently. We need to let them know. We have done that already.
You bet. Is our signage going to go up soon as well to get notified?
Yeah.
Okay. Two weeks. Thank you.
You mentioned in an email that once this is implemented, we're going to monitor regularly for effectiveness of the whole change.
That is correct. We will continue to monitor the situation, and if it, if we do see additional problems occurring as a result of this solution, we will look at another solution. The other temporary solution would be a temporary traffic signal, I believe, but we will make that decision at a later date if need be.
Thank you for monitoring it.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Mr. Ryan.
Rich, so if someone were to turn, or when they turn right off of South Washington going toward Baden, and they turn right, but they really got there and wanted to go left, what is the detour route, or what is the route that they would be directed on? So-
We would recommend that they go down to Hogan and turn Hogan and go down to Columbia Road and come back that way. If you, if you've ever tried to make that right turn, we did it recently-
Okay.
-when we were meeting with some of the folks out there, it's a very quick turn to go right and then left into the next street to go south into that neighborhood. It would not feel very comfortable making that turn.
No, there would not. There's only room for maybe two vehicles in that lane. So, yeah, so I was trying to think, how would they go? I mean, I would hope not through Fairway and route back over to Millville. So, you're thinking, if they want to really get to the Columbia Bridge, they're going to come up to Hogan, go left, go down Columbia Road, and then out on 128. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And again, we will be monitoring that as well, taking, paying attention to what the traffic is doing.
Yeah. I, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Now, go to Audience of Citizens, and if there's wish you make comments, may make comments during this part of the agenda. We're speaking just before the item is on council floor for a vote. Required to sign this public speaking book. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. The only speaker that we have is Jim Blomman.
Good evening, people there at council, and happy holidays to you all. I have a question for you. Okay, back, back last June, I was pulled over by a cop, actually, I moved, sexed out back there before that, and I actually turned the wrong way on One Way Street, okay? He's very, very arrogant, you know? He, we didn't submit story at all. I didn't submit story at all. That's pretty damn bad, isn't it? You know?
Jim, did you talk about this a while back?
Yeah. Back in June, June, June.
You've already mentioned that.
Thing is, well, I was pulled over about three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, around, around the event, and a car in front of the store, and I broke his out. I was trying to catch that car, and I told him the brake was out, you know? And the cop pulled over, started going 14 miles per minute. I said, I'm sorry, but I wouldn't say what I was speeding was because I was trying to catch that car so I could tell the brake was out. Well, okay, she let me out, but she said, well, I'll have again. I'm not going to have again, you know, but she's real nice. But how come some cops are, first time you pull over for something like that?
Jim, they're doing their job.
They're not, they're not, they're not doing their job for the people. They're doing their job for themselves, it seem like.
Right. Anything else you want to make known to us?
I think for the first time, you know, it's like I have my whole life, you know? There should be one, one chance, you know?
Well, Jim, thank you. It's the end of the year. Thank you for bringing up issues that we need to know about, especially the, the road issues. So, you wish us a happy holiday, and I wish you a happy holiday, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Have a good night, though.
You, too. Audience of citizens, we now go to the Senate Agenda. That does include all staff reports, all caucus reports. Obset the motion, and we go to the committee, which is an opportunity for us to ask questions, provide direction, comment on reports, learn more. The move second. Question to the council member, and then we'll be councilman Ryan. All the members, please say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Follow the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. That's 7:08. Okay.
All right. Yeah, may I proceed with the presentations, Mayor?
You sure can.
Oh, thank you.
I think for you to start.
Okay, so, we will start with Agenda Item Number Two, which is a grant application with the Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Grant Program. This will be presented by our Director of Engineering, Mr. Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. This grant application will be used to assist in the construction of the 1 million gallon elevated storage tank proposed for Hamilton Enterprise Park. The grant program is administered, administered by the Ohio Department of Development as well as the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. Estimated project cost for this project is $7.6 million. We already have a $3 million commitment from the Butler County Commissioners through their ARPA funds. Now, the grant request, which is the recommended cap at this, with this program of $5 million, and it's anticipated that the grant recipients will be notified first quarter of 2024. Next slide.
I got you.
And this is, this is the location of the proposed elevated tank off of Gateway Drive in Hamilton Enterprise Park. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Then, next up for Agenda Item Number Three, which is an amendment to Schedule A. Love a presentation or a brief presentation verbally from our Director of Resident Services, Mr. Adam Helms. Mr. Adam Helms.
Good evening, Mayor Moeller, members of council. Here to talk about the reclassification of our pay range for our resident services coordinator. This position is currently vacant, and we are taking the opportunity to amend some of the job duties to align better with our new department day-to-day opportunities. We are reducing the pay range from step 43 to 33. It's about a $15,000 difference. This job is more of an entry-level job in our department. We don't have any of those right now, and that's what we're doing.
Mr. Mayor, one question. Is this a seasonal position?
This is not a seasonal position. This is a position that was formerly held by Tammy Rose. Does a lot of different things, customer service. Back when we created this position, we were running managing the golf courses, and she was helping with golf outings. So that's why we changed the job description and kind of made it more entry-level than what it was.
I saw golf course, and I thought, oh, it's a seasonal. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, next up, I have a presentation that'll be made virtually via Zoom by Christine Carr of our Business Services Department for Agenda Item Number 19. If I could just get a moment to make sure that she's connected. We'll get going shortly. Christine, can you hear me just fine?
Yes, I can.
All righty. Just one moment to pull up the presentation, and we'll get going. Okay, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, residents of Hamilton. My name is Christine Carr. I am the Acting Director of Business Services for the City of Hamilton. I am here virtually tonight to provide a brief summary of Agenda Item 19 regarding a utility economic development agreement between the City of Hamilton and Arthur Group, who is a current utility customer. You did not see this item on a prior meeting's caucus agenda due to this agreement being time-sensitive. It was important for us to move quickly on it as it was critical for Arthur's business decision on whether to continue to operate and expand in Hamilton or to cease operations within the city immediately. The purpose of this proposed EDA is to retain Arthur as a significant electric user and support further electric growth within the city. The city does currently serve Arthur under an existing EDA. City staff is proposing an amended EDA to support continuing load growth in the city as well as retaining the current electric load. At the current load, Arthur is the top user of electric within the City of Hamilton. At this load that they're at currently, they would actually be projected to use more energy annually than the next top 10 customers combined. Furthermore, under the proposed EDA, their load is contemplated to approximately double from where they are today. The city currently has more energy resources than what is needed to serve our community. And because of that, Arthur's presence as a large user within the city provides an economic benefit to all city customers by utilizing the city's excess electric capacity energy. And on the next slide, I won't go into all of the terms of the proposed agreement. However, I did want to highlight a few of the key items. The proposal includes an all-in electric rate guarantee of 5.9 cents per kilowatt hour through March of 2024. However, there is an option to extend that to December of 2024 upon mutual agreement between the city and Arthur. The reason for this timeline is we are currently in the process of completing a cost of service study for the electric system. And this timeline would allow us the time that we need to complete that study, analyze the results, and then determine the best path forward for this customer. The existing EDA included an all-in rate of 5.3 cents. The 5.9 cents in the new proposed agreement was increased based on current conditions and power supply and was reviewed with our rate consultant, the same rate consultant that is completing the cost of service study for us. Another change with this proposal is the new EDA would cover load growth up to 28,000 kilowatts. The existing EDA only covers growth up to 20,000. And additionally, Arthur would continue to participate in our demand curtailment program, which reduces the city's costs to provide power to them, and they would still be subject to performance requirements as part of the EDA. Staff's recommendation would be that this resolution would be adopted, and the city manager would be authorized to execute this utility EDA with Arthur. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions that you might have about this item.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, no questions, Christine. Thank you.
Number 19 on our agenda, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Shortly.
And that will conclude our presentations for the Committee of the Whole, sir.
I'll set the motion. The Committee of the Whole will be closed. Second. Motion to councilmember Fier, second by councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Carried at 7:17. I'll set the motion that we reconvene the regular meeting. So moved.
Second.
motion made by councilmember Ryan, seconded by councilmember Fier. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, regarding the consent agenda, I'll set the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that with the exceptions of the item, item so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur on their recommendations.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:17. Now go to the public hearing, and I'll set the motion. It's a regular meeting, be recessed. The public hearing take place.
So moved. Second.
Motion to councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, no objection to that. Motion is carried at 7:08. We're now going to the public hearing.
A public hearing regarding amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 1250 zoning land use chart, Section 1400 accessory uses, Section 1700 signs, Section 1925 industrial design standards, and Section 3900 glossary, City of Hamilton applicant.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving these amendments? Anyone wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the amendments? Everybody signed the book, because Jim Ashley was in the different book. Anyone in council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that public hearing be closed.
Councilmember Nab, okay. You're second on that?
Second.
Councilmember Nab, seconded by councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:19. I'll set the motion at the regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved. Second.
A motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number... We're going to have council actions pretending to let us leave items. I'll set the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that an op be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Fier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, motion carried at 7:20. We now go to pending legislation, Agenda Item Number Five, agreeing to emergency ordinance regarding neighborhood coordinator classification.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2022-12-126, adopted December 14, 2022, as amended from time to time by reassigning the pay range for the neighborhood, the neighborhood's coordinator classification, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Or it's adopted, 7-0.
Agenda Item Number Six, second reading of emergency ordinance involving the city's compensation plan.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2022-12-126, adopted December 14, 2022, and as amended from time to time relative to salaries for certain city employees, repealing existing Schedule A as set forth in said emergency ordinance, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by councilmember Ryan. Comments on this one? None, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Or it's adopted, 7-0.
Agenda Item Number Seven, second reading of the ordinance involving our 2024 budget.
An ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, seconded by councilmember Nab. Comments or discussion on this? Just want to take our, thank our city team and, of course, our city financial team for working so hard on this budget. Councilmember Nab was involved with it. All of us went to several meetings, so thank the city team for getting this done. Roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Or it's adopted, 7-0.
Agenda Item Number Eight, second reading of an ordinance involving the city manager's employment agreement.
An emergency ordinance approving the terms and conditions set forth in the city manager employment agreement with the city manager and authorizing and directing all councilmembers to execute said agreement, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, seconded by councilmember Ryan. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Or it's adopted, 7-0.
We go to Agenda Item Number Ten, second reading of emergency ordinance involving community reinvestment area agreement with PLK.
An emergency ordinance authorizing a real property tax abatement within the city community reinvestment area for the purpose of encouraging economic development with the real, with the area and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement with PLK Hamilton, one LLC for the, for property located at 12 Water Cove Drive and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by councilmember Nab. I'll answer questions on this one. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Or it's adopted, 7-0.
We go to Agenda Item Number Ten, second reading of emergency ordinance involving the city's community reinvestment area agreement with PLK. Hamilton, one LLC for the, for property located at 12 Water Cove Drive and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by councilmember Nab. I'll answer questions on this one. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Stay.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, six to zero with one abstention.
We now go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number Eleven, first reading of ordinance, amending our zoning ordinances.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 1250 zoning land use chart, Section 1400 accessory uses, Section 1700 signs, Section 1925 industrial design standards, and Section 3900 glossary, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
We're going to proceed with this one because we have enough people, correct?
Yes, we have enough councilmembers to make a motion to suspend the rules tonight.
Okay. Your motion?
Well, Mayor, do you mind if I read it first?
Oh, I'm sorry. My fault.
All right. An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Chapter 192 income tax effective January 1, 2016 regarding updates to municipal income tax as required by Ohio House Bill 33, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading, emergency ordinance. I'm sorry, guys.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing, excuse me, amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Chapter 192 income tax effective January 1, 2016 regarding updates to municipal income tax as required by Ohio House Bill 33, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I, I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Agenda item number thirteen, first reading of emergency ordinance, first two reads of emergency ordinance involving taxable bonds. Give me water. Oh, well. Those means we're tripping.
Oh, my dear.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the city of Hamilton, Ohio in the maximum principal amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and declaring an emergency, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read but a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Ryan. Roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the city of Hamilton, Ohio in the maximum principal amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bond, and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Ryan. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item... Fourteen, that's over here, okay. Okay, this is two readings of an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Hamilton, Ohio during fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, first of two readings.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ryan. I move that the rules be suspended and a said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Uh, yes.
Motion adopted. Motion adopted, seven zero.
Medication.
We're trying.
We're all eat halls, we don't have to matter, we can have one. So you got, you got that roll call vote on him?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Second reading of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Hamilton, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote, but first off, any discussion about this at all? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number fifteen, which is a resolution involving new Ohio ambulance transportation program.
A resolution ratifying the application for the acceptance of a grant and execution of all related agreements from the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office of Budget and Management for the Ohio Ambulance Transportation Program and ratifying the distribution and use of said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by council member Lauer. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number sixteen, it's a resolution about brightening Ohio communities program.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Department of Development's Brightening Ohio Communities Program for the implementation of cost-effective, energy efficient, energy efficient improvements for streetlights and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents to receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Nab. Put you on the spot, Mr. City Clerk, you know about this program, don't you?
Uh, yes.
Why don't you tell the folks who are here and those who might be watching about this program?
Uh, sure, so first, I'd like to mention that this was a collaborative effort with great members of our city team, so it's not just myself, but Liz Hayden, our planning director, and two members of our Department of Infrastructure, Patrick Moore and Dalton Markham, as well as our neighborhoods director, Brandon Sarber, and also some members of the Parks Conservancy as well. So this was a, there was funding that was issued from the federal government to certain states around the country, and Ohio received somewhere around three million dollars in these funds for infrastructure improvements. These are specifically for like energy efficient and like a cop that, uh, retrofits within, within infrastructure, so some can be streetlights or park lighting, or even lighting with inside certain public buildings. Uh, we, per county, can be issued up to five hundred thousand dollars amongst communities within these counties, so we are applying, I believe, in three phases. One, it deals with retrofit kits for the entirety of German Village and retrofit kits within Rossville as well, so we're not actually changing the light fixtures themselves, but the internal components of these fixtures. So what we're, uh, we feel that we are in a good place for this application because we do own our own utilities, which does help with cost savings, as well as having our own in-house electricians that can, uh, do the work, uh, do the work as well. We're also anticipating cost savings with these energy efficient bulbs, and with these bulbs, they're a bit, um, they're a bit like lower maintenance, meaning we won't have to send crews out as much to replace them, so some of these bulbs, uh, I think they're, I think it's high, I could be, I could be wrong here, but I think it's like highly pressured sodium, that's older bulbs, we're trying to replace them with LEDs, I believe. Uh, these are bulbs that, the older ones are replaced maybe every three to five years, these can be replaced maybe once every ten years, so we're seeing, uh, savings in multiple areas, as well as savings in electric consumption within our neighborhoods. Uh, one other section of the grant that we're, or phase of the grant that we're planning on applying for, uh, deals with lighting in Officer Bob Gentry Park and Jefferson Park. Both of these are, you know, highly, um, like highly used parks, but they're also, uh, have fallen to vandalism in recent years, so we feel that, uh, fixtures within these parks would, uh, help mitigate against these issues and cost savings in that as well, so I hope that's a good summary.
Yeah, but thank you for choosing those two parts, ones that I think that would truly fit the programs, go.
Right, and, and one more thing I'll mention is that we are applying in phases so that other communities in our area could be applying for these funds, but we wanted to make sure that we cast a wide net to see what funds would be available for us to receive.
Great. Okay, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number seventeen, um, resolution involving the Ohio Urban Forestry Grant Program.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with the, with the Ohio Urban Forestry Grant Program Inflation and Reduction Act related, related to tree removal, pruning, and planting, hiring an assistant municipal arborist, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents to receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Make that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, seconded by council member Fear. Make a really good program as well. Any discussion, anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Agenda item number eighteen, resolution appointing Christina Latta-Landefeld to the Ordinance Review Commission.
A resolution appointing Christina Latta-Landefeld to serve on the Ordinance Review Commission for the city of Hamilton, Ohio for the term commencing January first, twenty-four, twenty-two-four, and terminating December thirty-first, twenty-two-four.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Lauer. Any discussion at all? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number nineteen, which is a resolution involving economic development agreement that we just heard about, involving Arthur Digital Assets Incorporated.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a utility economic development agreement with Arthur Digital Assets Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Nab. Any discussion on this at all? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.